Fourth, 2018, meeting of the city council on this brisk late fall morning. Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Here.
Pyro State Carvalho?
Here.
Soldner?
Here.
Inskeep?
Here.
Deckent?
Present.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Kim Berry, good morning.
Good morning. You're invited to pray with me. God of all life, thank you for bringing hope into the world at Christmas through the birth of a tiny baby, your son. We know that the holidays may be time to struggle for those without resources or a voice. Direct all of us and this council meeting today to be leaders for hope so that everyone can have the right to all the amenities that we all share. So God, lead our leaders and help them direct us through opportunities that ensure hope for everyone. We pray this in the name of the baby Jesus, the Savior of the world. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Kim. Next item.
Item four A, presentation about the night before Christmas event.
I like it. I like it.
I was referring to you, Zoe. Ryan Van Zant, North Pole, Hutchinson Zoo.
Zoe Shum, Santa's number one elf, North Pole, based at Hutchinson Zoo.
Good morning. We thought we'd bring a little Christmas spirit to get things started. We wanted to bring to the community's attention the Hutchinson's third annual nights before Christmas event at the zoo. We have, let's see, we started this three years ago and I think the first year we had around 15,000 to 20,000 lights. Last year, we had over 30,000 lights and I am informed this year we're over 50,000 lights. So it gets a little bright around the zoo in the evenings over there. It's a great event, has, you come in with your family, you ride the train, you get hot chocolate and cookies. Of course, Santa will be there and he's got a, his elves came in, what, last week and set up the workshop right in the middle of the Hutchinson Zoo, so he's nice and comfortable while he's there. And we have a new addition this year in that we put a community Christmas tree out in front of the zoo. It just got stuck in the ground, or on the ground, yesterday? Yesterday? Man, the days are just flying together right now. It's estimated to be over 20 feet tall right now. Lights and decorations are going on this week and Zoe's going to tell you a little bit more about the details.
Elves are short. So the Christmas tree is going to be lit on Friday, December 7th at 6:00 PM and I would like to invite you, Mr. Mayor, to come on out to the zoo and do the honors of lighting the Christmas tree if you would.
I cannot compete with the brightness I see, but I will, I will do my darndest to somehow handle that brightness.
We, we have put together, Santa really wanted a large switch, so we have put together a very large light switch for you to turn on and off. It's about four foot tall, so it's gonna be really fun.
So I better be working out over the next several days, huh?
Yes, lift some weights. And we will have a food truck there, we'll have music, like Ryan said, hot chocolate and cookies. So it really will be a great event and it, we are excited because it is a Hutch tree. It's not a zoo tree, but a Hutch tree. And we have reached out to other places around Hutch to try to theme up the tree so it is, looks and feels like Hutchinson. And so it can be a tree that you come out and see and can see Hutch Rack and the Cosmos Sphere and Stradica and all the things that make Hutch great in and on that tree. So we're really excited about this addition and we hope that you all, everyone in the audience too, will come out and be a part of that tree lighting.
Very good. Thank you.
Also, any questions?
Sounds like it'll be a fun event, yes.
Thank you. Does the event start at five or six?
At six.
Okay.
Six, December 7th.
A day that will live in infamy. All right, this is the time where there's opportunity for members of public who are present this morning to address the council on items that are not already on the agenda. We would ask that you keep your comments to three to five minutes and come to the podium, please give us your name and address. Now, I know that there's one person, maybe more. Please step forward when you're ready.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Curtis Sanders. I'm a lifelong resident of Hutchinson and I really love living here. I want to bring up something that's fairly radical, but it really isn't. We have the perfect place here in Hutchinson to build a hydrogen energy plant. It would, my idea was be located just to the south of the Siemens plant. But let me tell you more about before I get into that. It has a lot of financial, social and economic pluses. Number one, if we build such a thing, the income for the city, we would have businesses here in Hutchinson participate in building. That would be superior boilers. They, in fact, build hydrogen boilers. Also Barton Incorporated would build most of the containment for the hydrogen generators and they can do that also. I've spoken to them. And Siemens would supply from them the generators that are highly efficient and they also make hydrogen turbines. So that is your power source for some of the generation of it. And I have put a flow chart on all of you to show how it would work. I went with Hutchinson Junior College and they helped me do the flow chart, but it's real simple. Hydrogen can be generated with two stainless steel plates and about nine volts of electricity. It doesn't take a whole bunch of electricity to generate hydrogen. It's called electrolysis. Well, when you burn hydrogen, guess what comes out? Water. And it's absolutely no emissions from the plant. The plant would be encased in solar panels that would generate energy and also capture the radiation from coming off the generating of the power, twofold. Now, the social benefits, it would be, we could supply free energy to the core area of Hutchinson or at least a reduced rate. Also, we'd get economic income for the city of Hutchinson. It would produce high-paying jobs, highly skilled technical jobs and bring a lot of employment to Hutchinson to build it. And the best of all, the Department of Energy is really pushing renewable clean energy and have several grants and millions of dollars of grants. We'd have to have a grant writer to go for it, to get it, but it's out there. And this technology is proven. It's not something that's just out there, but we have all the pieces of the puzzle to put it together right here in Hutchinson. Part of it is where it's built, the old salt mines, the vacant caverns are 650 feet directly below the plant. What you could do, they store the energy, they have saltwater batteries now that you could put down there and because of the temperature non-variation, it's really good for the batteries. And what we could do is tie in with the wind generators and the batteries will store the energy on the grid and that's something that they're looking for too. The Department of Energy for battery storage that would keep the power even on distributing when the wind's not blowing and there's too much excess energy. And of course, we can sell it back online, our energy, and the idea is to make it so efficient, you try to make it so it costs almost zero to produce it. And again, there's no emissions from it all and with the water, you turn back into the system and recycle it when you are generating the power. But the land out there would be perfect because these salt caverns were finished up in the '30s below, where it's directly below where I proposed they'd build it. And of course, they have an industrial park out there, be wonderful place to do it. But can you imagine, to bring us into 21st century, we've become the capital of energy here in Kansas? And the best part of it is, we have a lot of brine wells around here and that's where you can store the liquid hydrogen. Once you take it and compress it and you can inject it into natural gas line at small amounts and burn it regular or sell the hydrogen, which is a very, very well-used product in the industry. And also, there's going to be a lot of hydrogen-powered vehicles in the future and it'll take us out of the petroleum environment and take us where we are headed for anyway. So I would propose we find some way to fund at least a feasibility study or somebody, hire somebody to get these grants to see if it's possible. And there's a engineering firm in Kansas City, it used to be Sega, they have a new name now, but I've talked to them and they'd be happy to come and visit and talk to it because they, they know how to build one. These engineers can do it. He said it's very possible. But again, we have all the pieces of the puzzle. So if we could just move ourselves, I think it would be wonderful economic boost for Hutchinson. And the social things, it's a trickle-down thing. If we have all these high-tech engineers and jobs coming in, construction jobs, it would absolutely be wonderful, I feel. So I, that's my proposal, but I hope you can do something. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Seeing none, next item, please.
Item five, consent agenda.
I would move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Been a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda? Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyro State Carvalho?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes. I want to move an item up from later in our agenda, that being item eight A under New Business, considering development agreement with the Engines LPG. So item eight A.
Mayor, I'll kick it off. Mayor, council, before you today is the job incentive development agreement between the city and Engines LPG. And council, remember back on November 8th, when Engines LPG announced their plans to start operations here in Hutchinson at the former bakery facility over here on 120 East Third. Really a neat, neat project and really a great opportunity to reuse an old building that we've wondered if it ever would see another use. So at this facility, they'll assemble, distribute, sell and support their products. The city has worked really hand-in-hand with the Chamber, the county, Department of Commerce, JP Wigan and Sons, a realtor involved in the project to bring this company into Hutch and really a great partnership was put together to make this happen. So as part of the incentive package, the city with this agreement will provide per job incentive totaling $52,500 over a four-year period. So the company, as you guys have already know and is in the agreement, would plan to create 10 jobs in 220, 15 in 221, 14 in 222 and 17 in 223 for net total jobs of 56. So per the agreement, the jobs will be created and the incentive will be earned once those jobs have been held for four consecutive quarters and we'll monitor that each year through the quarterly employment reports that they submit to the state. The city really in this project is matching what the county is providing, the same amount of dollars the county. So with that, we staff would be prepared to answer any questions the council might have. Abby Stockenbrandt from the Chamber is here. She would like to make a few comments as well on this project, so we can both answer questions.
Thank you, John. Good morning. Thank you for letting me be here this morning. Matt Rosier, the president of Engines LPG, couldn't be here because they are still transitioning their family and their company here, but he really, thank you for your consideration of these incentives for his project. This project came to us from the Department of Commerce back in March of 2018, so this year, and they were looking for an existing building. And so we showed them three when they were on the ground back in around June and immediately he fell in love with the 120 East Third building. We started walking through it and it was initially much larger than what his initial proposal was, but as we were walking through, he shared his vision with us about what he wanted to do and he, he wanted a existing building with character and it was a major plus that it was in downtown Hutchinson as well. And so I really feel like this is a good fit for not only that building, but also the Hutchinson community. Matt and his wife Monica are very entrepreneurial. It goes along with a lot of the initiatives that we've been trying to increase over the last year or two and he'll be a great addition to the Hutchinson and Reno County community. I want to reiterate a little bit of what John talked about of like the partnerships that were along with this entire project because it does take a whole team to bring these to fruition. And so the Department of Commerce was the initial lead in that and brought us the project. And then we have Josie Thompson and Mary Beth Reimer, who represented Wigan and they did a fantastic job working with Mary Jane Boyd and she was very excited about seeing this building repurposed as well. And they were a very good partner in this and of course Reno County. And I also want to give kudos to the city of Hutchinson staff who, they were brought on very early in the project to say, this is what we're wanting to do, what, what do we need to do to improve it and how can we work with the company to do small incremental improvements that works in their timeline, but as well as works with the, with the city and the regulations. So the staff was wonderful to work with. I appreciate your guys' consideration to helping this company. They're really a startup and so it's a very exciting time. They started with a much smaller footprint and size and scope and now they've grown to, we're looking at 56 jobs over four years and they're going to be about a starting wage of about $16 an hour and then some, some higher wage that are more management. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but also thank you for your consideration and partnership.
Well, this is a great project, just in so many different ways. Downtown, the jobs that are spoken about, the, the use of an existing building. So it, it is a great project. John, I guess maybe a question for you, making sure I understand, the, the job incentive would be accumulative, in other words, the, the first, I think it's 10, needed to be maintained and then the, the next group added to it, et cetera, et cetera. And so if there's, there's not a full addition, then...
Right. It's not earned, right.
Just doesn't happen, yeah. Okay.
That'd be correct.
Abby, timeframe, can you, can you talk about that a little bit?
They're wanting to start hiring the key positions immediately. And so for anyone here or listening, if you want to get ahold of the company with, at the email of information at engines-lpg.com, they're taking resumes right now. And so I think they want to start with their initial hiring. In the first year, they have about 10 that their scope of looking at and they're wanting to be operational by April was his initial timeline. But they're also hiring right now and looking for those key positions.
What sort of positions do you know?
So what they're going to be doing is converting engines that run or generators that run traditionally on gas into other different types of fuels, so natural gas, propane, and they're going to be doing assembly work in that facility. And so you're, they're going to need some engineers and as well as production leads to be a part of that, but then they're also looking for assembly teams, so people with general manufacturing skills to do the assembly work as it goes through. He has them in groups of three and so they work on, they work on those as a team as they move through the line.
Terrific project. Congratulations to you and the team and to repurpose that building, which has been an important part of our central business district redevelopment, so excellent. John, a question to you, on, on our incentive policy that we kind of mirror the counties, this is all performance-based and this is structured over about a four-year period. I guess my question is, is that, I know it's incumbent upon the company to make sure they provide the proper reports to you all, but do we have any internal policy that, that we would reach out to them on an annual basis to make sure that, that the company actually does provide you the information because time gets away, sometimes personnel changes and so on, and so I'm just wanting to make sure that there's good continuity, that they, if they're eligible for it and they're entitled for it, that they receive it.
There's no real, you know, policy per se, but there is a procedure that we would follow and typically on these, even going back on the Siemens project, we work hand-in-hand with the county at the same time, going through the same process, so there's not two entities coming at them, we want this, we want that.
Good.
And so that'll be something that we'll sit down with the county at the appropriate time with the company to look at the reports and verify that, that, that's been met or that it's been met before we make that payment.
Right.
So, I mean, it's a, it'll be a while before, obviously, before we, before we do that, but, but it'll be important. I think your point is that it's not forgotten and... Yeah, exactly, that it's not forgotten. It slips through the crack and then time moves on and then all of a sudden, gee. But the, the good thing about this is, because we're always talking about clawbacks and there's really not a clawback because you, you earn it. And so we're going to verify that they've been earned, we'll make that payment. And so there shouldn't be a lot of issues in terms of, you know, we've had in the past where maybe we paid for jobs that weren't created and then we had the clawback provisions. That gets a little complicated going back in and looking at reports and determining how much the company would owe back to the city and that's happened on a couple occasions, so.
And also to streamline it for the company, we made sure that the dates and the deadlines and timelines matched, so the city and county are the same, so that it should just be one report that you have to do for both instead of having to be a month difference or whatever.
Right.
Along with the, the job number, there's also a healthcare provision I read in there as well, is that correct? That they have to provide or make available, maybe is the right word, health insurance to those individuals as well?
Yes, and they do intend to do that. Like I mentioned, they are a startup, so it's a little bit different than some of the others that we brought in because some of the other companies, they're established companies and they're almost doing this in addition to what they're currently doing elsewhere. And so we've given them a little bit of grace time to come up with that healthcare plan, but they fully intend to provide healthcare and benefits.
I think the development agreement's really reasonable and I like how simple it is, John. I like the way it doesn't have the clawbacks. It makes a lot more sense. I know that that was kind of a, an issue with Siemens in some quarters, so very exciting project. Thanks for all the work you've done on it.
Other questions?
I would move to approve development agreement with Engines LPG and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Been a motion, a second to approve the development agreement. Any further discussion?
No, but Abby, I was wondering if after we vote, can I, can I ask you another question?
Hearing that, call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyro State Carvalho?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Okay, this is unrelated, but I'm going to put you on the spot for a minute since you just happened to be here and we heard from Mr. Sanders earlier about an opportunity and, you know, I'm not going to pretend to have the knowledge to understand this flow chart and I really don't know much about hydrogen generation at all, but I think that any, any idea about generating jobs in this community is worth fully exploring and it sounds like he's put a tremendous amount of work into it. And I think that Texas has a similar plan, or Chevron does, for hydrogen storage in salt mines. I know this community has some really shaky experience with gas underground, that was natural gas, so we would want to be mindful of any explosion possibilities, but I was wondering if it might make sense for the Chamber to sit down with Mr. Sanders and explore that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that segue. Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. I, I don't know a lot about what he proposed, but at the same time, all projects are worth looking into. I, I don't know how much it relates to having the salt underground if, if that is contingent upon the project because actually in our industrial park, it's in the buffer zone, so it doesn't have any mining underneath it. But there is obviously a lot of opportunity for other mining in the area. But yeah, I was actually going to give the gentleman my contact information and we can explore that together and it takes a lot of different things for, for the project to be the right fit for the right property and the right community and so we can, we can definitely vet that out.
Fantastic. Well, if you don't mind meeting with Abby, that'd be great.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
And that might also allow for some opportunity, you were mentioning grant writing as funding. I was also thinking that I don't know enough about it, the opportunity zones that have been labeled, I don't know if any of that's out that area.
It wouldn't be in that area.
It would not be in that area. Okay, darn.
Yeah, it's not in that area.
Not in that area, darn.
But yeah, no, and we have a group that's actively trying to look at opportunity zones as well and see how our area can benefit from those as well.
Absolutely.
Same with new market tax credits, which also is, that industrial park is not in that area, but yeah, we, we turn over every rock... turn over every rock to try to figure out how we can, uh, figure out and make a, a project feasible. But appreciate all of those, um, thoughts, and it takes, it takes a whole team to make economic development work in a community and a county, so I appreciate your guys' help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby.
Okay, returning to the order of the agenda. Next item, please.
Item six A, public hearing to consider appeal of Landmarks Commission decision regarding property at seven twenty-six East Avenue A.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Been a motion second, open the public hearing. Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hyros Day Carvalho?
Yes.
Goldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Decant?
Yes.
I can begin?
Please.
Good morning, Council, Aaron Barlow, uh, Associate Planner. Today to present to you a, uh, an appeal to, uh, decision by the Landmarks Commission to demolish a structure located at seven twenty-six East Avenue A. Um, so, this property is owned by Ernest Penner, and his wife, Ashley, is here today to answer any questions that you might have. Um, so this property is located in the Houston Whiteside National Register Historic District. It was built circa nineteen sixteen, um, and it's a non-contributing structure. Um, the description specifically speaks about that there's some alterations, specifically asbestos shingles, a new porch, wrought iron railings, and nonoriginal windows have all caused this building to be non-contributing. So to bring it into contributing status would be a significant amount of work, and we'll get deeper into that in a second, as we get into the analysis. Um, so the property there is located near the corner of Pershing and Avenue A. The Penners actually live in the home directly east of the property, if I get out the laser pointer. Right here, and, there we go, okay. And the property is, you can see a non-contributing structure in the neighborhood. Um, it's right there on the corner of the Houston Whiteside District, the furthest, um, east edge of the, of the district. Um, we'll go through some photos, and then I'll give you an analysis of what's going on. So here's the exterior of the building. Here's some interior shots. Uh, we have the, a bathroom, and looking into what is the kitchen. There are a few features, um, that might be salvageable in that property. Um, glass doorknob, that, uh, frame, the door frame, and some mold, crown molding. Um, see some of the damage. It's, this is all from negligence from the previous owner. The, the property owner, Ernest Penner, was given this property no cost. Um, I think they didn't wanna deal with the, the, the cost of holding on to it anymore. Um, see, here's some more of what's going on in the property. The foundation itself is, um, would require extensive work to bring the property into livable conditions. You can see there, it's starting to cave in on the interior. Uh, these are some scans, so apologize for the quality of the photo, but bathroom and kitchen. So, when the Landmark Commission considered this item, they are required to follow the Secretary of Interior Standards. Um, they act in the capacity of a certified local government. They are unable to consider economic issues, technical issues, design issues, or the comprehensive plan of the city. Uh, so they had to look at the, the ten Secretary of Interior Standards, and those are included in the, in your report. Um, nine out of the ten factors that did not meet tho, any of those historic preservation, rehabilitation factors, and the, despite the, the condition of the building, the Landmarks Commission had to deny the, the project. So, um, the Penners, um, appealed that, that decision. Now, uh, we could call it appeal, but it's more of a further analysis of allowing for other factors to come into play, specifically those technical issues, how much it's gonna cost to improve, to bring the property into livable conditions, those design issues, what it's gonna take to preserve the historic features of the building, how it relates to our comprehensive plan, and the financial situation of the owner, and the value of the property, and how much renovations are gonna cost, um, the economic issues. Um, so we can go through each of these issues. First are the technical issues. Um, when the, um, I'll let my notes go. The Penners got a quote, and that's included in your report as well, on the amount of, how much it would cost to bring the property into livable conditions, and that quote came in at a hundred and three thousand dollars. Um, the property is valued at forty-seven thousand dollars, I believe, last time I checked, uh, on the Reno County Appraisers' website. It's more than double the value of the home. Um, get financing, finding financing for that would be very unlikely. Um, and the, the, when I spoke to Trent Maxwell, I showed him the photos. Um, he said if one of his staff had, um, inspected the property personally, would have likely condemned the property and recommended it to go onto the demolition list. So the, they're really under, with, through the technical lens, there's really no feasible, imprudent alternative to the proposal. It, e, either they can let the house sit, or they can move forward with what they'd like to do. That's, those are basically the two, the two options at this point, because of the years of negligence to the property. Next are design issues. Um, this one was mixed. For the home itself, the amount of time and work that it would take to restore the defining features would be above and beyond that a hundred and three thousand dollar estimate. That was the bare minimum to bring the property into conformance. That was not accounting for the Secretary of Interior Standards using historic materials, replacing those materials that have been lost, or removed, or replaced. Um, so you're looking at a, a larger estimate. They did not get a, an estimate from a historic preservationist. Um, that wasn't timed, there aren't any in town, and our, uh, contract with our consultants has, has run out. Um, so, but, um, leaving the home as it is would maintain the rhythm of the neighborhood, the, the spacing of the homes along Avenue A. If you drive in some parts of, of town, you know, you, you see a house missing, and it's like a missing tooth in, in the, the face of that street. So, this, our analysis, staff's analysis was mixed on this specific issue, on design issues. Um, for, for the house itself, there still again are not really any feasible, prudent alternatives. Okay. Community plan relationship. Uh, the comprehensive plan specifically talks about, uh, developing a targeted demolition plan that maximizes reuse of properties. Um, it's, the amount of work that would require to rehab this building is almost to the point of, um, in fact, Eddie Spellman recently built a property on Eighth Avenue on a land bank lot that cost less than the amount of, uh, it would cost to restore this home. Um, on a, on a vacant lot that the land bank owned and, and sold to him. So there are examples in town of replacing, rebuilding a, a new home in, in, for an infill lot that costs less than the amount of work that it would cost to, to renovate this property. Um, also Trent Maxwell, again, uh, said that he, this would end up on the department's, uh, long list for demolitions. Economic issues, again, uh, the hundred and three thousand dollars is above and beyond the estimate, uh, above and beyond the, um, the, the property's appraised value. And so that's, that's the extent of our analysis. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Aaron, I think I know the answer, but I, I wouldn't ask it anyway. The recommendation by staff to the Landmarks Commission was to deny the, um, uh, request for demolition.
Correct.
And, um, the recommendation to the City Council, uh, this morning is to, to, uh, approve it or to override that decision by the Landmarks. Would you speak to that a bit, please?
Yes, so the, again, under the Landmarks Commission, they're, um, an organization that has been, they're acting in the capacity of a certified local government by the State Historic Preservation Office. We, a few weeks ago, we renewed our agreement with that preservation office. These decisions by the Landmarks Commission must be determined under the Secretary of Interior Standards. We cannot consider the four issues we just spoke about today, specifically economic issues, the amount of mon, money, amount of time, the, the overall comprehensive plan of the city. We, we are simply confined to the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation. So, based on that, you know, that area that we're, this, the square that we're supposed to stay under, we recommend denial, um, because those are the factors that we've been given. With the appeal, there are new factors to be considered, and those factors, that, that opens up the, the discussion to a wider, you know, is this house worth saving at this point? Are there better and more prudent options available to the city that are not preservation-related?
Okay, so different parameters for the two different situations. Okay. Uh, you, you referenced Trent and inspections a couple of times.
Correct.
Um, I'm just curious, if it, if this house had become, uh, and you may or may not be able to answer it, but if this house had become to his attention, or his department's attention, would we still need to go through a, a hearing process, since it's in a historic district?
Correct.
So it would have taken the same process?
If it, it would be maybe his department that would come and speak to us, and we would go through the Landmarks Commission and then appeal that. Um, because we are contracted with the state, we need to follow that, those procedures if we wanna continue to act as a certified local government and maintain local control of our preservation.
I, uh, I think I saw in the material that there's been something like three different owners in the last year.
Correct.
Uh, the, the Penners being the, the third.
Maybe Ashley can speak more to that, but yes.
I'm sorry?
Maybe the owner can speak more to that after, but yeah.
Okay. Obviously severe neglect, um, and, and it, it's a shame, uh, that, that that's occurred to any house, much less a house in a, uh, in the historic district. Any thoughts on, on what we can do, should do, uh, for future to, to avoid facing this kinda thing again?
Uh, well, there's education. We can probably expand our continued, our education efforts to let residents know that a home like this, um, or maybe one that's not at, at this level of neglect, but has many of the similar nonhistoric features, that you can replace those nonhistoric features with nonhistoric features. You don't wanna move the needle more in the direction of nonhistoric, but you can maintain, you know, very carefully, you can replace the asbestos siding with a, asbestos siding or another nonhistoric material. You can replace the vinyl windows with vinyl windows. You cannot replace the wood windows with vinyl windows, but you can replace the vinyl with wood, if that, that makes sense. So it's, it's education, I think, is one major step, is helping people know that, you know, preservation's not as scary as it seems, all the rumors that go around, whether on Facebook or in your social settings, um, that staff is here to help you through that process. Um, and we, we'll continue to, to do that through our Facebook page and other means. We have a seminar coming up, uh, next, next year, uh, probably early spring. We're gonna, we, uh, spoke to Jim about this. Um, we have, we went to a conference in Lawrence, and there is a, a window restoration, uh, expert there who I really think could excite the community about, um, you know, about windows. He's very passionate about those. He's helped start up businesses all over Kansas, Oklahoma, and Texas.
You made the comment, uh, in your remarks, the, um, house that was built, I think it was on Eighth Street, uh, at a lesser cost than a hundred thousand. Any sense or idea if, if there were to be a house built to fit the character, in this case of the Houston Whiteside, uh, how, how that may, uh, balance out in, in the equation?
So new homes, um, on the, in the neighborhood do not need to adhere to the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation. Um, there's a home on First Avenue that it burned down, probably, it's near the Sugar Mill on the north side, like five forty-six, I think. Um, they used nonhistoric materials. Um, I believe their cost also was down significantly. We, we would, the biggest concern with putting in a home in the Houston Whiteside District is making sure it does not, it isn't pretending to be his, a historic home. It's not, um, what's the word they use? Um...
Oh, it's not a replica.
Not a replica of historic features. So, I'm, it, it can't, it, it needs to be a representation of its own time, if that makes sense.
Interesting. Questions further, from other members of the council?
Uh, I assume, Aaron, that since it has asbestos shingles, those will have to be abated. I mean, you can't just go in and start pounding them off, right?
Um, I don't, can't speak specifically to that. I believe a license contract would require to do that. I'm not the, the building official for that.
Uh, you said the owner's present, or the owner, yes.
So my husband's kinda the brains behind this, but I'm the one that can actually talk in front of people, so I got wrinkled into this. Um, but I wanted to tell you a little bit about our plan on the yard, because when people think yard, sometimes they think, you know, trashy, or parking different cars, and that was a concern that they had at the Landmark, um, Commission as well, that we were gonna be parking multiple vehicles, that it wasn't going to have a nice appearance. Um, but my husband, what he would like to do, and he's actually, um, eyed this property for a while. Um, you mentioned that there has been several owners, and that's true. Um, and he, it was on the auction, I think, um, before this last owner that had gotten it. It was on the auction, but I think there was back taxes or something where we weren't able to put a bid at that time. And so when the opportunity was given to us, I mean, you can't really turn that down, cause that's been the dream of his for a while. Um, it's, it's been an eyesore in the area for a while. Um, the previous history of it is, I think there was a married couple, and the husband was taking care of the property, and when he passed away, his wife just wasn't able to, um, keep up with it the way he was doing it. Um, but what my husband would like to do is he would like to take a fence around the property, and so, um, we'd like to expand the yard. Uh, we have a four-year-old girl, um, so we'd love to have some more space for her to run around, um, and, you know, just have that enclosed area, uh, maybe build a, a playhouse or something of that sort. Um, just maybe, um, we're thinking of buying a camper eventually, so having a place where we can, um, have that as well. Um, but when you look at the cost, over like a hundred thousand dollars for the property to be even fixed, financially, that is not possible for us to, to do. Um, if we are able to, um, tear down the property and merge our property into one, um, financially, that'll help us as well, because we're not paying two property taxes, cause that would merge into one property. Um, that's my understanding of it. And also, um, they mentioned, you know, like, the property, it's like teeth, you know, you wanna have your teeth in a, a certain order, and you have one missing. But you have to think of it like this. If you go to the dentist and you have one tooth that's rotten, are you gonna keep that tooth, or are you gonna pull that? I mean, which is gonna be the better necessity for the person? So...
Good analogy.
Yes. So I'm open to any questions you have. I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability, uh, but like I said, my husband is the, the thinker behind this, and I'm just the one with the voice.
John, would we need an additional vote to merge the property to, the way that's parceled out? Would we need an additional vote somewhere down the line to merge that?
No, that would be done through the register of deeds.
No.
Okay.
We, we're, we would have to be involved in that.
Probably a county thing, yeah.
Yeah.
A county thing, okay.
That's not our...
Wow, good gravy. What a, what an act of Congress.
And the crazy signs there about trespass, those were the previous owners. So I mean, if you look in the pictures, there's some, that, that's not us, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, there was some comment made about some, some historic elements. Do you have any intention to, to seek to have any salvage work done of, of either, uh, I think doorknobs were mentioned, maybe cornices, some woodwork, that kinda thing?
Yeah, we, and when we went to our first meeting, um, they had mentioned the doorknob, and my husband was very compliant, you know, like whatever we could save from it. Um, I think they are starting where they're, um, they're collecting things that they, um, kinda like, you can go to the store and get a doorknob, or, um, thing like that. Um, so we, we would be fine donating that and, and helping to the best of our ability. Um, but overall the property, we just couldn't save.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's...
I would urge you, I would ask, you know, what, what, whatever architectural elements, interior, exterior, or whatnot, uh, to, to make those available in some fashion to, to be used later on.
Seems to me it's just delaying the inevitable. Uh, if, if they chose not to do anything, it would end up on a list and immediately get demolished eventually. Uh, who are we to say, you know, it's a property rights deal as well. They, they own the property, what they wanna do. Uh, I am with Steve. Anything that could be salvaged, uh, your neighbors, uh, would certainly appreciate being able to utilize some of that with their own restoration pieces, I'm sure. Uh, but, uh, I would, uh, oh, I guess we're in the middle of the hearing.
We have to close before that.
We have to close the public hearing.
Did you have anything else that you wanted to add, or do we have any further questions of you, Anna?
Um, no, I think that was it. I think with the three owners, um, I think we're the only one that's actually gone through the process of, and, um, the other owner, I think it was just too much to go to all the meetings and everything, so, um, we're just following the po, protocol.
Okay. Thank you for doing that. This is a public hearing. Uh, is there anyone, uh, in the audience that wishes to address the council on this, on this matter? Okay. Unless you have something else, thank you.
No, no.
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Been a motion second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hyros Day Carvalho?
Hiros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes.
So there are two possible motions. You can grant the appeal or uphold the Landmark Commission determination.
I, I just want to comment before we have a motion or, or speak. It, it's a shame that we lose a, a house in the historic district in this fashion. I, I certainly support the demolition. It's obvious, it's, it's well beyond repair and, and, and yet it's a shame. Therefore, my question earlier to Aaron, what, what we can do either to, to publicize, to educate, to whatever, or to somehow intercede before neglectful owners are, allow a, a piece of property to, to deteriorate, and not just in the historic district, any place in town for that matter. But it, it just seems to me in, in a recognized district, it's all the more shameful that it even occurred. So sad is, 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 is an understatement, I think, for what happened to this particular piece of property. I'm glad there's somebody who wants to at least utilize the property in a neighborhood improvement type of setting, rather than just simply turning it into a, a personal parking lot or whatever the case might be.
I agree, Steve, but I also think that we'll continue to see deterioration in that area because this is an obviously very arduous process to navigate, which Ms. Penner identified. And, you know, not everyone's going to have the, the means or the time to go to the Landmarks Commission meeting and then the City Council meeting in the middle of the morning. So I think that's, she's identified maybe why we're seeing additional deterioration there. If you don't have the financial means to bring it up to, you know, historic standards, it's going to continue to deteriorate. So I know we've gone down this path a hundred times and discussed, discussed what we can do with our relationship with the state and this historic district, but, and I'm not in favor of getting rid of the historic district. I just, we need to recognize that as long as we're holding on to it, we're going to continue to see pockets of deterioration.
And we're exploring that to find better options for the future, and we'll keep you updated on what happens.
That'd be great.
But didn't we find out we can't shrink the district?
That's right. They said we could not shrink it as long as more than 50% of the properties were contributing.
Were contributing, yeah.
It seems like if there was some way we could streamline the process for properties that were obviously never going to be able to be brought into compliance, that would be one method. We'd have the best of both worlds. We could keep, keep our historic district, but make it easier for people who are in this situation.
Well, unfortunately, there are certain hoops that you have to go through as part of this local, certified local government bit that kind of prevent that from happening. But, I mean, you know, this was a non-contributing structure from the get-go. So to me, it was pretty much a done deal. And, okay, are we ready? That said, move to grant the appeal of the Landmarks Commission determination and authorize the issuance of a demolition permit for 726 East Avenue A based on a finding that there is no feasible or prudent alternative to the project.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant the appeal. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hiros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes.
Item 7A, consider resolution for adoption of city flag.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. You have before you a proposed resolution. You have some of the information that was provided to us on the proposed flag, a timeline and the symbolism of the flag, and an example of the flag itself, and I know that there are plenty of others who would like to speak to that today.
I see flags all over in the audience.
I see flags.
Is there a drum roll here?
There it is.
No, Jackson. No, no drum roll. But Jackson Swear, 103 West 22nd. So I'm here today serving as a representative of the Raising the Flag Steering Committee, and I know you have many other matters to attend to, and we're already on the go for almost an hour, so I'll try to be brief. But I do want to give some context for why and how we got to here and for both you all and also for everyone in the audience. So the Raising the Flag Steering Committee was formed from a group of individuals that shared a vision of Hutchinson where everyone takes pride in their community, and you saw a flag as a symbol that we could possibly rally around for that. And we were inspired by the success of the Wichita flag, so we knew the power of flags as that kind of symbol. And to be sure, we knew that there's more to community pride than just having a nice flag, but that symbols like flags do matter. So the group got together and applied for and received a Make It Greater grant from the Hutchinson Community Foundation, and Stage Nine graciously agreed to act as the fiscal sponsor because this was just a grassroots group of people and we didn't have a 501(c)(3). And we were inspired also by a TED Talk by this guy named Roman Mars, who told us that there were five things that you needed for a good flag, that you needed to keep it simple and use meaningful symbolism and use two to three basic colors and not use any lettering or seals and to be distinctive and be related. And that gave us somewhere to start, but we needed help from the broader community to end up with a flag that actually followed those principles. So we held a series of facilitated community conversations and learned what people thought they need, wanted to see in a flag, and we saw some of the main themes that ended up in the flag here, and you've got in your packet kind of the symbolism of the different elements of the flag and how that's related. And then, in order to get to this flag, we had a design contest where we had shared what we learned in those community conversations and encouraged anyone in the community, and even a few Hutch people who'd moved away sent some flag designs back and encouraged people to submit designs. And over 50 designs were submitted and then judged anonymously by a special committee made up of people from the steering committee and also other people recruited for that purpose that were prepped with feedback from those community conversations and also with the principles of good flags that I mentioned earlier. That committee included artists and non-artists and men and women and people from a diverse ethnic and racial backgrounds. We wanted to be sure that we ended up with a good flag design that would truly represent Hutchinson and would belong to the community, which is why we went through this 10-month-long process that I've just described. And I think that, that surprised many of us who got on board. I think there were some of us, maybe almost all of us, who really hoped that we would be done by the Fourth of July. So here we are today. But community involvement remains critical for the flag going forward because a successful flag is one that's used by the community in big and small ways, from murals on walls that we hope to see all around Hutchinson to stickers. And today, the Raising the Flag Steering Committee hopes that the City Council will adopt this design as the official flag of Hutchinson, and we hope you'll adopt this flag because this place where we live, whatever its faults, is a place we're showing pride in. So I'm open to any questions, and I know there are other members of the Steering Committee and other involved people who have questions for them. I'll, you know, tag them in if we need to.
This is an issue that I raised a couple of weeks ago and would, would like for you to address it again, Jackson. And the, the decision to present to the community, to the council, one, one flag and one flag only versus an opportunity to look at, at several, maybe the top three to five or that, that kind of thing.
Yeah, so at the very beginning of the process, the Steering Committee spent a great deal of time deliberating on what process to go through to get to a flag for Hutchinson. And we considered options like giving the City Council three to five to vote on or putting it out to a broad public vote. And based on our research into what other cities had done and what the results of those had been, understanding that some municipal flags are quite bad and some municipal flags are quite good, wanting to model our process off of places that had good flags instead of modeling it off of places that had bad flags. We went with the process that we, that we did. So it was a, sort of a deliberate choice to gather input from the public in terms of what symbolism would be important on the flag, and then to invite anyone to, to try their hand at designing the flag, but to ultimately leave the selection up to sort of a special committee of people who were going to be uniquely qualified to make that decision.
I think the process you employed was really admirable, and you did a great job of trying to engage the most people, but still end up with a professional result. I love all the different organizations that were involved and all the people, so I, again, really commend the entire Raising the Flag Steering Committee. I love the results. I hope others will, too. I would certainly be in favor of adoption.
Jackson, just a question. In terms of protocol for, for flying the flag, is there such a protocol that, that we?
There, there are lots of protocols for flying flags, which I won't pretend to be an expert on, on all of them. There is a sort of a correct orientation for the flag, so the pole is supposed to go by the white part, and so that would mean that if you were flying it, you would fly the, and that's sort of obvious if you actually have a flag because that's where the.
Charles is going to show us.
Okay, Charles, yeah.
All right. So if you were hanging it this way, you'd hang it like this. If Charles is a pole, then you hang it like this.
All right.
If it's on a moving vehicle, then it goes like this, and we're going, poor Charles. Right? Yeah, I'm going to the police chief, my bigger idiot.
So that's, that's, that's the short version. And there are lots of other rules and protocols and procedures for how it should be flown and its relationship to the American flag and all of those things.
You didn't expect this.
You would lower the flag as you would the American flag, be consistent?
I actually don't know the answer to that question. Does anyone want to?
I would imagine so, because if, no flag is to fly higher than the American flag.
Yeah, I suppose that would be correct, yes.
I, I think it's probably national, state, and then local.
Sidebar conversation, did we get ours at the roundabout lowered?
Yes. Well, I, I know it's lowered here. I, I haven't been up there today, so.
Okay, it wasn't yesterday. I shot you a note, but, okay.
Yeah, and I think it's been taken care of. Yes, it has.
Thank you.
And I do have one quick question because I had a couple of questions. This flag is public domain, so anyone can use it however they want.
Thank you, John, that's correct. The, the flag is released into the public domain, so anyone can use it for any purposes, business or otherwise. You can take it and pull out elements and use them for other designs. Yes, that's all, all fine. There, that was a condition of participation in the design contest was that you had to release the design to the public.
The 52 entries, do you happen to know how many different applicants made up those 52 entries by chance?
I did not come prepped with that number.
Don't even worry about it, that was my own curiosity.
Their applicants were capped at a maximum of three.
Okay.
So we had some people who sent three and most people sent one and a couple people sent two.
Very good, thank you. Well, I want to add, thank you for taking that burden off me of having to judge. Seems to me, early in my tenure, we had to figure out a.
A seal.
A seal, thank you. And I don't know, I didn't feel comfortable with that either. I, I will start by saying that first I was a little bit indifferent, but it has really grown on me. I, I really liked the flag, the more I read about the background of it and the procedure that, that was put in place to, to come to this decision. I also like it with a, a different backdrop. We talked about that earlier, too, so the white pops a little better. I've seen it sometimes on a white background, you lose that edge a little bit. But with that being said, it's not going to take 80 years for ours to catch on like the Wichita flag. We hope not. We hope not. Okay, very good. But I am, I am supportive of it, I will put it at that.
Well, I likewise want to applaud the, the grassroots effort and the development of the flag. I'm not the fan of the flag that some others are, and, and, you know, I've questioned the, the merging process with the city and, and not a fan of that either, but I do applaud the, the grassroots effort, and I think that, that speaks well to folks in the community coming together, whether it be in, in this particular item, that is designing a flag or anything else. And so, and I'd say for the amount of money that, that you were granted, and assuming that's, you basically stayed within that budget, I think you accomplished a pretty good-sized task economically. Jackson, how do you get one of those stickers?
I've got some.
All right.
We can give some to you right today if you want one. I believe they are at a variety of different businesses around town right now, including Bluebird Books and the DIY World Market for two that I know for sure, but I'm confident that the flag and other flag merchandise will be arriving to businesses near you.
So it'd be really awkward if we went a different direction.
I mean, kinda, yes.
Can I go ahead and move to approve the resolution establishing and adopting an official flag for the City of Hutchinson and authorizing the mayor to sign?
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hiros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckent.
For unity of the community, yes.
We have a flag.
Yes, on behalf of Stage Nine and the Hutchinson Community Foundation, although they didn't specifically approve this purchase, Stage Nine would like to present you with three flags to be phoned at locations of the council's choosing. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. An interesting process. Next item, please.
Item 7B, consider ordinance annexing multi-jurisdictional right of ways.
Well, this should clear the room.
This is the most exciting, interesting piece of the. Don't go away.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. Counsel, you have before you an ordinance annexing multi-jurisdictional rights of ways, which is sometimes referred to as ring roads and boundary roads around the city. By statute, KSA 12-520E, when we are notified by Reno County to annex the remainder of the roads, which means our boundary is in the middle of the road, we are required to do so by statute. There was a memorandum of understanding that we entered into at the county for some improvements to be made to those roads before we annexed them into the city. This item had actually been on a city council agenda before, but we withdrew that because a couple of those projects had yet to be completed. The Director of Public Works, Brian Clennett, has now confirmed that all of those have been completed. So we are now required by statute to annex these roads, and there are about 10 of them in there that are identified on Hendrix 43rd, several on 43rd, and on, several on 30th, and on Halsted and Avenue G. So I would ask the council to approve the ordinance.
Brian, question for you. The, the work that's been done on the various locations, what, what longevity, what life does, do those road surfaces, do we think they have?
Probably 10 years, 10, 10 to 15.
Comparable to work that we'd have done if we'd have done ourselves or had it done?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
It was an overlay, about two inches of asphalt overlaid on top of that existing pavement.
How many road miles or lane miles or something are we taking on here?
I had that number at one time, but I don't remember what it is.
Not tremendous, is it?
No, I mean, compared to.
Compared to the rest of the city, yeah.
I think it added roughly 10 miles.
Yeah, it's less than 10.
Okay.
Somewhere in there.
And again, we're obligated, I, I think the City of Salina tried to do something about that and it didn't end well.
There's actually a court of appeals decision that came out that interpreted that statute and said, yes, you are required.
The end, yeah.
No, no choice.
Yeah, and I'm not questioning our, the requirement or even that we not do it, just
curiosity.
Yeah.
10 more miles.
Yeah, 10 more miles.
Good example of city-county cooperation.
Yeah.
Good demonstration project.
That's been on it.
With that, I would, sorry to be preemptive, I would move to approve the ordinance, including, incorporating and certifying certain land within the limits and boundaries of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, multi-jurisdictional right of ways, including portions of Hendrix, 43rd Avenue, 30th Avenue, Halsted Street, Avenue G, and Lorraine Street, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Then a motion and a second to approve the ordinance on the multi-jurisdictional rights of way. Any further discussion?
Not necessarily on this item, but it did strike me, we've talked about in the past that we do not have an agreement with the county about our own, help me with the wording, jurisdictional.
Oh, three-mile jurisdiction?
Yeah.
Extrajurisdictional.
Extraterrestrial jurisdiction. Is that something that we've ever, not ever, that we could approach the county about? Are they open to that commu, or conversation? And regardless of the argument, we still?
We've had that conversation multiple times, I think, over the years. You know, we really have that zone of influence that we pass.
What is that zone of influence?
Where anything in that area now comes before the council or can for public comment. We're not allowed to veto or anything like that.
They don't have to listen to what we say, but...
But it's a mile, I believe. It's called that zone of influence.
Well, I think we're a bit remiss if we didn't have that conversation for future projects of our own, things that we want to do as we expand or whatever.
I think we've got that on the agenda, to have that conversation at some point in time with a joint meeting with the county. And, you know, we're the only city, I think, in the county that doesn't have it.
I've thought as much.
But I think we also need to have a reason for that and understand why we're doing it before we, you know, before we just jump out and say we want to do it.
Right. And topically speaking, because of the conversation we had, the Strong Towns event not too long ago, with our ever-expanding boundaries and borders and things like that, I think we need to be mindful of as we expand and what we do with that, and have some say in what goes on as we grow. That would be my reasoning anyways, so as long as we keep it on topic.
Related, John, the zone of influence, that's a one mile or?
You know, I'm trying to remember. I don't know exactly.
I think it is.
It's a mile. And we've had one project that has come before us, and we commented on.
Right. And extraterritorial, do we set, if we went that route, do we set that boundary, or is that something that's?
No, it's three miles.
Three miles. That's three, usually. Okay, okay.
Well, no, by statute, didn't you say?
Yeah, it is by statute, three miles.
Oh, it's set by statute, okay.
And then you get, you know, you get in the conversation about people in the county that live in the county for a reason.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
It's not like people are going to be excited that that's something that we're talking about, because it does place restrictions in those areas on people that moved out there without those restrictions. And so, you know, that's a difficult conversation to have, but, you know, the county and the city elected need to be on the same page going out in those public meetings.
Good brother, big brother.
John, I really think that that's why this area of influence is a good compromise.
It was at the time.
It's a good compromise. You're protecting the rights of those property owners who don't want to be in the city.
And it doesn't prevent them from doing that, but at least we have the ability to comment, and if there's reason. But it's a big deal. Not as much for us as it is for people who live in that area.
Sure, sure, and it makes sense, but my concern is not necessarily, and not dismissing the concerns of the county folk, but I'm beholden to the city. And so, having the control is the piece I'm concerned about.
That's why there is that tool, and that's why most, a lot of communities have it.
All but us.
Well, had it a long time, and for whatever reason, Reno County, it's just interesting that, you know, Beeler, Haven, I think those two cities all have it, and yet we don't. And we did, I don't think anybody here was on the council, but we approached the county, and they were not interested in that at all. And that, but I'm talking, that goes back, you know, probably 10 years.
And the county's done more on zoning.
Yes, they have.
They have. For itself.
It could help with the conversation.
Yeah, that's a different.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll tee that up, and we need, it's probably time we have that joint meeting.
Probably what we're talking about again.
Right.
Thank you. I did move, sorry. And then I hijacked it.
I think we do have a motion and a second, having to do with the multi-jurisdictional. Further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hiros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskey?
Yes.
Deckin?
Yes. Next item?
Item 8B, consider agreement with Sunflower Ag Enterprises.
Good morning, my name's Brian Clennan. I'm the Director of Public Works. The City of Hutchinson wastewater treatment facility processes and treats approximately 4.6 million gallons of wastewater every day, and from that process, approximately 8,200 cubic yards of biosolids are land-applied to about 600 acres of city-owned farm ground and privately-owned farm ground. Sunflower Ag has been the city's contractor to apply the biosolids for the last eight years or so, and their current five-year contract expires at the end of 2018. One area that our wastewater treatment facility planning study looked at was a regulatory review of the biosolids application process, and what they found was that no changes are expected in the near future on any new regulations that might apply to that. They also found that our current land application process was the best method to dispose of our biosolids. So right now, our plan is to begin negotiating another five-year contract with Sunflower Ag, beginning in early 2019, and that contract would run from 2020 to 2024. So in the meantime, just to cover us for 2019, we're bringing forward this one-year agreement with Sunflower Ag for your consideration.
Wondered why it was just one year. Okay.
And we're really looking at the, we wanted the wastewater treatment facility planning study to be completed, just to make sure that there wasn't a tweak or something that we didn't know about before we entered into a longer-term agreement.
Makes sense. Brian, that 8% increase, is that pretty consistent with prior years?
No, prior years, it was just the cost, the Consumer Price Index, the CPI index. The additional, roughly a little over 5% increase is that one of our private, well, our private farmer would like some additional compensation to hold in reserve 50 acres of farm ground, and we have that 50 acres just in case there's an emergency. You know, and a good example was the flood that just happened. We've got a considerable portion of the city-owned farm ground that was flooded from the Arkansas River, and a considerable portion of his farm ground was flooded, and he was just getting ready to plant wheat when that flood happened on our ground. And so, we were scrambling for a little bit of acreage to remove some of the biosolids. So that 50 acres in reserve is important, and he would like some compensation to have and give us the flexibility to have that kind of emergency land.
Got you. That makes total sense. Thank you.
So Brian, in the longer-term negotiations for the contract, will you send out an RFQ?
I was not planning to, and I think if negotiations break down, then I could go that route and send out an RFQ, but Sunflower Ag has done a good job. They're a local business, and, you know, this is over $100,000, and kind of keeping it in.
Okay.
In the community.
The community, and I'm not aware that there are any other folks within Reno County that are doing this type of, that would be interested in this anyway, so.
Brian, what's the breakdown between the acreage, city-owned versus privately-owned?
Right. The city has 210 acres of farm ground.
So over 400 then is privately-owned?
That's right, and really, he's got over 600 acres right now that's available, that we could use, right.
How impactful would it be if we did not have access to that 400 or 600 acres that's privately-owned?
Well...
You wouldn't get rid of everything.
Yeah.
And really, the way the contractor, the contract is written with Sunflower Ag, it's his responsibility to go and find the ground to land-apply. So it's really his contract with the private farmer increased the 50, $600, and so he's passing that along through the per-tonnage increase, and I think he is going to be exploring and visiting with some other local farmers to try to expand our options.
And that's kind of where I was, I mean, we're at the mercy of a private landowner, basically, to provide, you know, the space that we need to dispose of.
And we've had a long working relationship with...
With this one?
Yeah, he's, yeah, a very long working relationship.
But the other thing is, there's real value to what we're putting on their land.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, is there not, it sounds we're, value to the product, the by-product?
Farmers see the value in this. It's not like we're just dumping toxic, you know, waste on land. I mean, there's a reason they want to do that, so.
Make it further.
And it's considerably cheaper for us to pay the farmer the rent, if you want to call it that, to put the product on the land, than it would be for the city to go out and try to acquire another 400 acres worth of farm ground.
And, you know, one of the things in that study was if that land were to become open, you know, to purchase, it would be wise, I think, of the city to make that investment, so that we have more acreage under our control for the application of biosolids.
Other than flooding or other kind of naturally occurring events that would render the ground unavailable, at least temporarily, how much more biosolids could we dispose of, cubic yards, I guess, than what we do? I mean, what's our capacity on the existing 600 or so acres that we have access to?
Well, we pretty much used that full 600 acres to apply our biosolids. Now, the local farmer has another 200 acres available if it were needed.
Okay, so we need the 600 that we've got?
We do.
Ongoing access to?
We do, yes. Yeah, that's on average over the last five years how much property we've had to use to apply, and it's all based upon, you know, the nitrogen content of the soil and what the crop that's being planted and how much nitrogen that's going to uptake. So samples have to be taken of our biosolids, samples are taken of the soil.
Which controls how often we can apply to a particular plot of property, or how much?
Exactly. It controls how much can be spread. That's right.
Interesting. I guess, this is just a curiosity, I kind of assume that wastewater treatment would render whatever product is left as neutral, but it doesn't, correct?
That's correct. There are organics.
There are nitrogens, and there are other, okay.
Yeah.
It's just that it's rendered toxic-neutral, if I'm using the right term, but certainly not from organics that can be beneficial and that kind of thing.
Right, well, in toxic-neutral, there are some pathogens in these biosolids. These are Class B biosolids, so there are some limitations on how these biosolids could be used, could not make these available for like a local garden to be spread on because of the salmonella and the E. coli that's in this particular mix.
Interesting.
And that was one thing that we did look at, was how much, you know, is it feasible to develop a Class A biosolids versus a Class B, and it costs quite a bit of money to do that.
That's where all that remains coming from.
That's just what I'm thinking, Jade, it's a good thing we're not growing lettuce. And there are, there are rules about the crops and how those are used as well.
There's so many jokes and pulses left.
I think of my farm upbringing, I mean, we collected the manure that was deposited and respread it onto the fields. I don't know how that would fare under the regulations that our wastewater treatment has to operate, but my guess is it probably would not meet some of those.
Right, and, I mean, and there are limits on those for the Class B as well. We have to reduce the attraction of flies and mosquitoes and mice to this a certain amount, and we're measuring to make sure that we're meeting that regulation.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions, discussion? Is there a motion?
Well, I'd move to approve an agreement with Sunflower Ag Enterprises, LC, for services related to the removal, transportation, land application, and agronomic management of dewatered municipal biosolids and authorize the mayor to sign.
A second?
Second.
Then motion and a second to approve the agreement with Sunflower Ag. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hiros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskey?
Yes.
Deckin?
Yes. Next item?
Item 8C, consider 2019 memorandum of understanding with the International Association of Firefighters.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. You have before you the submitted contract with the firefighters for 2019. Want to tell you upfront on the next two contracts and the memorandum, before Merrill died, retired, she prepared virtually all of this, so I want to give credit to Merrill for that, and Merrill, if you're watching, you have been missed. The remainder was done by Tom Sanders. Also, to give you a little bit of information on these items, I'll go through the items one by one, but many of these items were by agreement with Chief Beer and fire management and the union leadership, and were simply submitted. And some examples of those are the union business funeral attendance, the callback policy, bereavement leave, promotional ranking procedures, the uniform-wearing apparel. That was all done by agreement between fire management and the union leadership, and I want the council to be aware of that. To the individual items, funeral attendance, that was to clarify that that is an on-duty firefighter when that attendance occurs for a firefighter who's been killed in the line of duty. The callback policy in Article 9 is a complete overhaul of how the callback is going to occur. It's being done on a software system superior to what we've had in the past, certainly streamlines it rather than a series of calls to try and get all of that accomplished and make sure that you do it in the right order. Clarifications on bereavement leave, that it starts at the time of death. The promotional ranking procedures, reduce the requirement for department experience from seven years to four years for the captain position, and there's some position-specific task books. In other words, there's some specific standards about how those promotions are going to be made and the tasks that are administered to make that determination. The wages have been updated with the pay ranges. That was the purpose of the pay ranges, so that we can stay current and simply adjust the range to the marketplace. The rest of the compensation system, the merit-based pay and the bonus plan administrative procedures, you'll see those appearing throughout the contracts. That was the remainder of, in addition to the pay ranges, about the evaluation of employees and the procedure for doing so. Duration of agreement, this is a one-year contract. The wearing apparel is on there. That was for new employees, new firefighters, to have that allowance up front for $500. There's specific items of uniforms that they have to purchase, and they needed some of those monies up front, so we, that was revised so that that could be done. Old days, we kept an inventory, and we had shirts and pants and all kinds of things that didn't necessarily fit anyone. So this is, this is much better, and it needed some adjustment for that to occur. And the final thing on there, there's a wage compression adjustment for three members of the department, and that's all we have on that contract.
Paul, moving forward, or John, maybe, who will handle the bulk of the negotiations with Merrill being gone?
We are still discussing that. Have not determined exactly how that's going to work going into next year's negotiations, but I suspect it will include the city attorney, the HR director, department head, and maybe myself, I'm not sure yet, so.
Missen her more every day. I know you.
Yep.
Dish it a lot. Well, I move to approve the 2019 memorandum of understanding with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 179, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Motion and a second to approve the contract with IFF. Any further discussion? I just want to comment, kind of a follow-up to Paul, appreciate fire management's productive involvement in coming to this agreement, and I'm glad we have an agreement, certainly much better than having to go through other avenues. My disappointment is how long it's taken us. Here we are in December, but it is good that we have gotten to this point, and that's a positive thing. Anything else? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hiros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskey?
Yes.
Deckin?
Yes.
Item 8D, consider 2019 memorandum of understanding with the Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 513, Hutchinson Reno County Emergency Communications Employees.
It's a whole lot easier to say dispatch, which is what we have here, and it's a proposed contract, has been approved by the... Which is what we have here, and it's a proposed contract, has been approved by the, by that unit. Just a few changes there, a few updates, training, the, it's going from 20 hours to 24, that's required, so that's the reason for that change. They've instituted a callback procedure within the contract, provides for those who are on-call to receive a dollar per hour for the hours assigned for callback, they have limited numbers in, in dispatch, and they have to be covered 724-365. So, it's important that that callback take place, that there is someone there, always have to be there, and this helps to assist with having available staff for the need. Wages, again, the pay ranges were updated, and the administrative procedures, similar to the, the prior contract, instituted in, in this contract as well. And lastly, it is a one-year contract, and we would ask the council to approve that contract.
Any discussion or a motion?
I move to approve the 2019 memorandum of understanding with the SEIU Local 513 and Dispatch.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve. Any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvalho?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckin?
Yes.
And allow me to interrupt at this point and give you one further message. The Fraternal Police have approved their contract as well, you will see that on the next agenda.
Very good.
There are some documents that I needed to finish up and make certain that I had accurate information in it, so you will see that next time.
Excellent.
Nice.
Okay, report us to the officials. Nancy?
Uh, nothing.
John?
Just more of a question in terms of perhaps a brief update on where we are with the status of the LEC renovation project. We are actually, had reached out, or Sarah, I don't remember Sarah's last name, but with Landmark, will be the lead architect on that, is, is point of contact at the police department, and so Chief Hooper, along with one of his staff members, will be the, kind of our lead on that, and they're, they haven't really started the process yet, but.
It's afternoon.
It's afternoon, okay, they've got meetings.
Oh, it's taking you so long.
Great timing, so, yeah.
Is, is there, I don't want to get ahead of things, but is there a projected let date for the project?
Not yet, I think that's part of what we're going to talk about, and, you know, part of it is a lot of the.
Logically, in 2019, there will be a let date?
Yeah.
Oh, hopefully.
Yeah.
Are you talking about let or a completion?
No, I'm talking about let.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah.
Yeah, we, you know, a lot of the concept was designed under previous leadership, and we need to make sure new leadership has some input, so there could be a few tweaks here or there, and obviously, we spent a lot of time just on the access issue there, and I think we've got that resolved, but, yeah, I don't think there are any reason why it wouldn't be let in 2019.
Okay. Anything else, John? David?
Nothing except for run out and get your newly-adopted flags wherever they might be on sale. That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Jay?
I wanted to encourage everybody to attend the mini-free Christmas events we have available, especially in downtown Hutch on Saturdays in December, also on Third Thursday, everybody heard about the event at the zoo this Friday, there's just a lot going on, and especially if you've got young children, I hope you'll all take advantage of that.
And we will hope for good weather.
Yes, pray for good weather. The parade was brutally cold.
It was, and I don't have anything. John?
Yeah, a couple of things, just wanted to mention, some of you may know, but Lila Fritschin, who we will recall is our former Human Relations Director, many in the community know her really from her days in the school system as a teacher and as a principal, she did pass away on Thanksgiving Day, November 22nd, Nancy alerted me to that, and we just wanted to wish her family well. I did, her daughter, had a conversation with her daughter yesterday, they're having a memorial service down in, in Texas, they actually in Fort Worth for her, and then Lila will be buried with her husband in, I believe it was Dorance, so, anyway, just wanted to mention that, you know, she's been gone a while, and just wanted to let people in Hutchinson that may not be aware of that, that that did happen, I told her daughter I would, would more than gladly do that, so.
We appreciate that.
Secondly, council, remember the wildfire back in 217, and we had a FEMA reimbursement of roughly $452,000 for our labor, equipment, all of that involved in the fire which was declared as an emergency and FEMA funding came about. Most of the $452,000 was attributed to fire, but we had some public works costs as well. We received a notice on November 20th that there was a miscalculation in the labor cost. All the reimbursement forms were filled out by FEMA, or by the Kansas Division of Emergency Management, so it wasn't us, they, they filled all the information out, and in an audit that was done, they found that there was a formulary in one of the cells that attributed to the fire, the fire department overtime. And so, our notice says that we're to repay $146,350 of that $452,000, so, and we're not out money, we just got to give back money that was given to us by, due to a, a miscalculation in the Kansas Division of Emergency Management form, so it wasn't anything we did, it was just a miscalculation, so.
So, they can't absorb that?
Pardon?
Kansas Division of Emergency Management.
Yeah, I, you know, we were, I, and I, you know, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but I just wanted to really track down, you know, what happened there, and that's essentially what happened, and they, it went through a final audit, and, you know, at the end of the day, I guess, the bright side of it is that FEMA, which is a big organization, at least has that kind of control and monitoring those kind of things, you can imagine the amount of money that goes out in this country on these type of events, and you wonder, is it all accounted for, and so, if there's a bright side, but.
John, had we already included the 452 in our budget?
No, that was, that was, yeah, of course, you know, in our case, we would have, you know, we, we paid that overtime out.
I was going to say, we spent the money.
Was it in the 19? Okay, so it would have been revenue for 19 budget, yeah, so.
Okay, so time for a few bake sales, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, what it will do, it'll, it'll have a little effect on our projected year-end balance, which Angela's working on now, and, you know, we may be a little bit shy of what our projection was, but not, not too much, so, anyway, bit of bad news, but, anyway, that's not much.
Is that a final? Is there any, any other hoops that could have some further impact on, on the amount of the compensation that we retain?
I, I think that was the final audit, I think they have two processes, and that was the final audit that caught it, so, yeah. The last thing I had, just the report on sales tax report from November, November 27th, we're, we're right now about 1.5% over where we were last year, numbers at this time, but we're still about $120,000 shy of, of our projection for revenue this year, so.
Can you remind me, did we, did we budget flat on sales tax increase next year?
Very flat, yes, we did.
Okay.
For, for 19, right, yeah, so, and I think, Mr. Mayor and council, that's all I have right now.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion for our German?
So move.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvalho?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckin?
Yes.
So many takers.
All of us are kind of like lazy today.